I call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School District School Board to order. If we could stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have action on the minutes from August 21st, 2024? Can I make a motion to approve? Discussion?
Yeah, there are some requested.
We need a second, thank you. Discussion.
There are some requested edits from the public comment portion that we have in that Phyllis now has. So we'll make those, Phyllis will make those edit requests and we'll move forward on those.
Yeah, to clarify, it was a constituent that was at the meeting that made public comments. And they're just some typographical errors that they're asking to be modified in the minutes. So that's.
So I will amend my emotion. I will make a motion to approve the minutes with amendments.
Perfect.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Do we all get a copy of the changes?
Oh, I can forward it to you. That's reply. It's simple little things like instead of and I was, it's supposed to be when I was. Really just.
Send that in now?
Nothing that changes the actual. Substance or intent of the statement, just really typographical. All right, Rick coming at you right now. Did I do? You vote on that now? Now I'm lost. Okay.
We need to.
No, we did vote. Right, we had a first and a second.
First and second, no vote.
Okay, all right, all in favor? We'll hold for Rick, he's reading it.
Yep, good.
Okay, unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, I will sign these manifest documents, get them sent around. No nominations, no resignations, correct? Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much.
Do you have a presentation this evening?
That's right.
Principal Mitchison will be joining me.
Well, well.
Fantastic.
So. Hello? Guess I'll hold the mic, is that okay Glenn? Thanks. All right, well, I wanted to take a moment to welcome everyone back to the 2024-2025 school year. This presentation mirrors what I shared with staff at the opening days. But I think it's important for the public and the board to understand where we are and where we're headed. So first of all, had a fun summer at the Ambrose household. We, we went to Europe and I finally saw Stonehenge. And I got Papa to go to many castles and places in Europe along with his daughter and grandsons. And that was really fun. Papa's on the left there, obviously. And Papa is a, was a third grade teacher for 40 years in the same school that he grew up in. And he's been the first selectman in the town of Moscow, Maine since 1973. So he's a, our family is rooted in civic service and service to the community. We did see the most beautiful cathedral I've ever seen in my life. The Salisbury Cathedral is the most amazing building that I've ever seen, super fun. And then I got to work on some goals and that brings us into our presentation. So this summer I set a goal of riding a bicycle 1,000 miles in the woods. And why am I talking about this this evening at a presentation to the school board? It's because data informed this process. Riding a bicycle 1,000 miles in the woods is a long, long time. So I use data and math to help me make decisions to do this process. The first thing I did was simple math. I divided the 1,000 miles by 10 mile rides and I figured out I have to ride 100 miles. I mean, 100 rides. And that means that I have to do roughly 20 rides a month for five months. Well, if you count the number of weekend days, that means I've got to put my bike on the rack and ride it after work sometimes to get in all those miles. Today I'm at 876 miles, so I'm still not done yet and I started in May. In education, oftentimes the word data is considered to be. Frankly, just like a dirty word or challenging. Because people say that, well, it's not about the kids, it's not about our relationships with kids. But the truth is, is that data informs our decisions and helps us to meet our goals. And it's not an issue of, of either or, it's more and and. So we need to look at data, make decisions and think about the kids, right? And build relationships with them and work together to meet their needs. So it's about the whole picture, not any one part. So with that in mind, I'm going to present to you some information about our district's data. Our, the way that we provide instruction and what our goals are around instruction this year. Our expectations for the teachers' professional learning communities that were negotiated into the collective bargaining agreement last year. Can't thank the taxpayers enough for ratifying that collective bargaining agreement. Our hiring went very, very well this summer because of the raises that teachers received and the PLC expectations are a part of that process because now the PLCs are after school. So administrators can attend those without having to deal with the distractions of discipline or other ongoing daily activities. And the other thing I want to talk about is the cell phone policy expectations and how that's going this fall. So there's two numbers on these slides. The first one is the number of the, number to the left of the slash is the data from last year in the spring of 2023, two years ago. And then the number to the right of the slash is the data from the spring of 2024. So it gives you a snapshot of some data points and where we are in relationship to those, the previous year. It's important to recognize that, for example, kindergarten students will have moved up to first grade. So it's not apples to apples, it's not the same kids because they've moved to first grade. But it still gives us an idea of how we're doing overall as a district and I'll explain that in a second. So here we go, here's the elementary data for BAKI. We had some great progress in kindergarten, 68% of our kids were at or above the benchmark on the NWEA. That is a nationally normed test against millions and millions of students. It's a very strong indicator for early learning. In ELA, we had 54%, up from 44%. And to explain my point from the previous slide, if you look at the 51% in math in kindergarten, those students went up to first grade and actually came down some this year in, to 36%. So we need to work on that area. So you can see that we have some growth to make in first and second grade with instruction. The good news is, is that the scores in first and second grade did not have an implementation dip, even though we implemented a whole new program called CKLA, the Content Knowledge Language Arts Program. Normally, when you implement a new program, you have what's called program dip. We did not have that this year. We actually had some increases in some areas such as ELA in grade one. Grade two math, 57 and 58%. And then in ELA, we went from 40 just down a little bit to 38. But again, that group of 38 moved up from 33 in grade one. So it's important to look at it in both directions. Memorial, we had some amazing growth. Our third grade math team worked really hard on the math modules and they had 72% of students at grade level on the NHSAS in math. That is a huge success for our district. We are so excited about that, that we've actually rolled out the model that they use to all the elementary classrooms. And they're working together on, on the work that that team did. We had 52% at grade level in ELA. And then in fourth grade, we had some growth in math to 52% from 48. And in fifth grade, we went from 34 to 41. And in third grade for ELA, we went from 48 to 52. In fourth grade, we stayed relatively level at 45 to 43. And in ELA, we stayed the same at 48 to 48. And fifth grade is one of the science testing years and that went from 26% to 34. For the middle school, we had sixth grade math at 31, went up to 41. But ELA went down from 47 to 36. Having said that, that same group did much better in. I'm sorry, you okay? All right, happy to help you, I'm just checking in. That, that group in sixth grade from, from in ELA, I apologize, went. When they moved to seventh grade, they went up a little bit. But it, so they're kind of staying level in the middle school from year to year with a dip in the sixth grade group. The eighth grade, we had 37 to 42 in math and ELA went from 64 to 54. And science went from 42 to 32. So the eighth grade team is looking at their data and trying to figure out what happened because they had worked really hard to get that 64% the previous year. And they are trying to figure out what happened for this past year. In the high school, we had, we went from 34% to 26% in the NHSAS. And in reading and writing, we worked really hard, which was part of my doctoral work. And we increased the scores by 10% from 45 to 55%. And our SAT scores in math went from 19% down to 14%. And Principal Mitchison here is to, is here to talk about that this evening. And I'll hand the mic to her in just a minute after I finish my presentation. So what are we doing? First, we're implementing the UBD units that were completed in December of 2023. We use the adopted programs for reading and math with fidelity, including CKLA and Amplify and vision and reveal math programs. And it's important to recognize that fidelity means that we're not going to deviate from the program. So we have professional development for staff to teach them how to use the programs effectively. I attended one of those sessions today, it was fantastic. And we're providing support for teachers in implementing the, the new curriculum that we've adopted. We're looking at data and to plan instruction and assessments. The NHSAS, the SAT, the PSAT and the NWEA. We're setting our expectations, we're teaching, assessing, teaching and repeating until students acquire the skills that they need to know and, and they know what they need to be able to do. We are explicitly teaching test-taking skills. That does not mean that we're teaching to the test, it means we're teaching about how to take a test. We're going to teach students how to read, write and perform calculations effectively until the test scores improve. And then the assessments need to be timely and accurately measured. Student learning to provide feedback and goal setting. It is very important that, that students get feedback quickly so that they can make decisions about what to do next. It's important to remember that we're planning in all areas, music, art, PE, shop classes, everywhere. We read and write in all subject areas. One of my favorite meetings last year was with the shop teacher. And he said to me, he said, I figured it out, Dr. Ambrose, I figured it out. I said, what? He said, I figured out how to get them to read in shop class, they have to read the manual for welding. So we had them reading the manual and learning the vocabulary for welding. Think about that, that's got to be some very complex vocabulary. We're working hard on our lesson plans and we're going to develop them based on the UBD units. They'll be available for review to administration at any time. And instruction will include the following, active engagement with all students to ensure learning. That what this really means is that staff will be up and working directly with students all of the instructional period. And then explicit instruction and comprehension, which is understanding, predicting, inferencing and word problem solving. And we'll be working on explicitly teaching, assessing and reporting on age-appropriate vocabulary for each unit. And the building principles and literacy supports, literacy staff will support that work. For example, the kindergarten students may learn 25 words while high school students may be working on Latin and Greek roots, morphology, prefixes and suffixes, et cetera. Everyone should be working on reading all the time at every level is the real, the real message here. We'll continue working on our assessments to provide evidence of student learning and reflect the rigor of the unit. We have had great success with grade inflation last year. If students are doing well on assessments but failing state and national assessments, our unit assessments and/or grading lack the adequate rigor. So in other words, if you're doing really well at Sanborn and you're getting A's but you do really poorly on everything else that's not from Sanborn, that means that we're not, we have grade inflation. And that has improved at the high school with the new grading policies. Grades will be comprised of multiple pieces of evidence, including both summative and formative assessments. So that means assessments as you're going through the work and then one at the end when you complete the unit or, or a period of study. Intervention, all students will receive engaging and rigorous classroom instruction. And then inside the classroom, teachers will have small groups of instruction that is done by the classroom teacher and then individual support for students by classroom teachers. And then we will continue to use the intervention programs that the board has provided to us for small group instruction by the interventionist and individual help by the interventionist. At our PLCs, we expect our staff to review the unit plans, review the academic data, at least three sources. And then review instruction plans for students who are struggling, those who are at grade level and most importantly, those who need enrichment. Because just because a student is doing really well doesn't mean that they shouldn't get the attention that they need to be engaged in school. We need to create intervention plans to ensure that all students make at least one year of growth. We're going to share ideas by talking and listening to each other with the goal of improving instruction, including but not limited to implementing reading instructional strategies across all content areas. Writing and reading, writing about reading and talking about reading daily. So there's significant research that if you read every day, it helps you at one level. But if you talk about reading and you share with a partner or write it down, it significantly improves your, your understanding. Direct instruction for vocabulary, which includes the word solving skills. So the direct instruction for vocabulary, it's important to understand we're not teaching kids word lists. We're teaching them how to figure out tricky words, there's a huge difference. Direct instruction for fundamental math computation skills, division, subtraction, addition, multiplication and fractions. Part of that is because we've moved to a new math program and some of the students at the high school were the students who received the old math program. So we have to keep working with them to improve their skills because the new math program seems to be much better. So our district goal is to have 80% of students score at or above grade level on assessments and reading and math. And for all students to make one year of growth, it's an ambitious goal, but we will continue to work on it. Wanted to take a minute to talk about the cell phone policy, there's been a lot of public buzz about that. Our policy currently is that students are prohibited from using privately owned electronic devices. This is language directly from the board-approved policy. Including but not limited to cell phones, smartphones, tablets, drones, smartwatches and electronic games during classes and school activities. Including study halls, field trips and co-curricular extracurricular activities. During classes and school activities, all electronic devices must be silenced or put in do not disturb mode and put away. Our teachers at the six through 12 level have implemented pockets that are on the wall and the students put their devices in the pockets on the wall. If this rule is violated, the device will be confiscated for the remainder of the school day and discipline may be opposed as provided below. And that cell phone policy is located there, I can share it with anyone who'd like it. This year, we're implementing cell phone and personal device consequences. Students who break the cell phone policy will stay after school as a consequence. Principal Mitchison has hired some after-school help to provide detention for those students who don't follow the policy. And those students will not be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities the day of the infraction. The parents will have to pick up the phone and the students may take the late bus but will not get the phone until the parent picks it up. So that starts next week. This week, next week, next week, thank you. So in closing, I just want to remind everyone that like riding your bike 1,000 miles, setting goals for school is a critical component of making decisions and making those decisions has to be done using data. We have a lot of information in our school district and we need to make decisions about what we teach students based on that data and our teams are doing a great job already of unpacking that. So just like to close by reminding everyone that no one of us is as smart as all of us. With that in mind, I'd like to give the mic to Principal Mitchison who'd like to talk about some other data that is a part of our student success profile because it's not just all about SAT scores. So I want to remind everyone that the Scholastic Aptitude Test was designed for students that were going to college. And it was designed to help put them in, in, in quote buckets. Management, people who would go to college for a job underneath management and then people who might go to trade school. That's not really supposed to be a test of a high school's effectiveness. So the board, six, seven years ago, worked to develop other criteria to look at the success of the, the district. And I'd like Principal Mitchison to share, share some of those talking points with you.
Hello, and I'm here tonight with Associate Principal, Ms. Nicole O'Brien. So this spreadsheet we updated. And just to remind everyone, this data in some cases is almost two plus years old because the class of 2024 graduated this past June. So some of these assessments, they would have actually taken the spring of 2023. So we're going to walk you through a few of the data points that are here. And I know this spreadsheet's a little small, we'll make it a little bigger. I'm going to hand it off to Ms. O'Brien to go over a couple first.
All right, thank you. So the first indicator here that we're looking at is the percentage of students who graduated as a New Hampshire scholar. This is a program through the state of New Hampshire that takes the base, like the minimum graduation requirements and then kind of ups the ante where they have to do a little bit more, they have to take some more classes, they can specialize in different areas. And with the class of 2024, 52% of our students graduated with the distinction of being a New Hampshire State Scholar. Beneath that, you can see our dual enrollment percentage there. So this is the number of students who not only took a college, in college course while in high school, whether that be through NECC, SNU classes that we offer in our building. And these students also received a 70% or better in the course. That was 44% of students. And to clarify, this is out of like the entire class of students. So 44% of our students from the graduating class of 2024 took a college-level course in some capacity and a few different avenues that we have for them to do so and got a 70% or better.
Okay, and so the next is the percentage of students who hit the benchmark or above on the SATs. And again, this is last year's graduating class, so they took the SATs in 2023. And the total number is 20%. The breakdown was the 45% in reading and the 19% in math. The next row is the ACT and so interesting. So Ms. O'Brien and I were meeting and talking about this data and we're like, gee, this is interesting. No one really takes the ACT anymore. And then we did some digging and in the 2017-2018 school year is when New Hampshire adopted the SAT as its official standardized test. And so kind of just drawing a conclusion that makes sense is kids now had an opportunity to just take the SATs, you know, for free essentially, and fewer kids, you know, just stopped taking the, the ACT. So we were thinking of maybe proposing that it's not something we necessarily want to look at. We can talk more about that later on, I can talk with Dr. Ambrose and see his thoughts. But just kind of an interesting thing that we picked up on.
So the next row takes a look at the students who took an AP exam and scored a three, four or five on it. So the AP exams are done through the College Board. There's a set of curriculum that the students have to do throughout the year. And then the College Board tests them and if they receive a three, four or five, they can potentially get college credit at multiple universities and colleges across the United States. We had 68% of students in the class of 2024 who took one of those exams and got a three, four or five on it. So that's pretty incredible. We have a few AP courses offered here every year. And while they may be smaller classes, the students that are taking those classes are doing really well on those exams and are getting that college credit potentially at the universities that they plan to attend in the fall.
And just to add, so the AP number, so it's 68% of the group of kids from that class who took an AP test. If that makes sense, just to kind of, so we didn't have 68% of the class of 2024 taking an AP test. We had a small cohort of kids who took an AP test and of that cohort, I mean, they did amazing. Literally, that's, I, we couldn't, we triple-checked that number, it was, it was a really strong group. Next up is the CTE credential. So really interesting, this is one of my favorite things that we've done here over the past few years. So 24% of the class of 2024 graduates earned some kind of industry credential. So we had students who earned their EMT certification, students who earned their LNA certification, students who learned, earned an OSHA certification, a SafeServe. We had a student take a pipe fitting certification and I'm sure I'm missing some, but it was really awesome to hear the kids talk about those experiences. So we're going to continue to, to build this program and, and keep up these industry credential certification opportunities.
And in a similar vein, the next number there is the number of students who participated in an extended learning opportunity, an ELO or an internship during their time here at Sanborn. And that was 57% of our students. So more than half of our students took that opportunity and they did some really amazing things. That included, you know, working with the local fire department as a volunteer firefighter and getting that experience firsthand, doing apprenticeships with electrical companies in the area, doing things with the local welding shop. We had a student who was doing an education internship in other district schools here. We even had a student who created a new logo for the Sanborn trustees. So they're taking that learning and they're doing some great stuff that really just brings it beyond the classroom.
All right, the next row we have is the ASVAB. So we've been lucky to offer the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery for our students to take. They can opt out, but this year we had, or last year I should say, so the class of 2024, two years ago, about 77 of them took that assessment and 54% scored at a three or higher. And so that was fantastic to see. And I think it's a nice way to think about, you know, students who are considering more of the avenue of going into the military with the balance of, you know, how well a lot of them did on that exam. And then the fall, the final row here before the bottom is our college acceptance rate. So that has sort of come, been a little more steady the past two years. And so the class of 2024, 63% of them were accepted to either a two or four-year college or career or technical school. And you can see how that data has kind of fluctuated over the years of how many students applied, got in, what the scenarios were. So it's interesting to look at. And then the final row down here is the percentage of students who earned more than two or more of these indicators. So for example, the percentage of kids who maybe scored at or above benchmark and then they also scored a three or higher on an AP exam and they also did a three or better on the ASVAB. So we had 77% of the graduating class of 2024 who met two or more of these indicators. And the last thing I want to talk about quickly regarding the more current SAT data. So I just wanted to kind of add to Dr. Ambrose's slides with the plan. And so what are we doing and kind of talk about high school specifically, what our plans are to, to do some improvements. In terms of the senior success data, we want to keep doing some of these things that we're doing, right? It's, it's yielding some great results, the kids are having an awesome experience and in some cases getting a foot into their career before they even set foot out of these doors, which is what we want for those kids. During the 22-23 school year, Nicole and I were already thinking about data and how we could improve things. And so we started our SAT explicit instruction, practice, opportunities across all content areas. We worked really closely with our intervention team and we came up with lessons that teachers would do with students in the classrooms to actually practice taking the test, to practice the skills, to practice the strategies and all of those things. And we've made some efforts to make that day really special because that really helps to set the tone, to set the tone ahead of time and remind the students that it's not, it's not just about the SAT. It's an opportunity to practice this kind of an assessment, which you need to take if you want to be an electrician, if you want to be a plumber, if you want to go into education, law enforcement, real estate. So many industries require students to take a test in order to be certified. And so, you know, that has helped a lot with some conversations that we've had. We've made sure that the building is relatively quiet on that day so that we can really focus on the juniors and the SAT and the testing environment. We've been taking our freshmen to the YMCA. Our sophomores will also take the citizenship assessment on the same day. So it's nice to sort of do the two at once. so it's nice to sort of do the two at once. And then our 12th grade students have their senior success day, which is really good. We've provided breakfast for the students that morning, because that, I think, is super important, right? Before you're going to sit and take a test, to make sure that students have the opportunity to have snack, have some water, make sure they're ready to go. And we have done a lot of work with vocabulary and literacy at the secondary level, not just in the English department, but across all content areas. We have some really great resources, and so we're going to continue that work. And I also wanted to note that we will be sticking around for non-public to talk some more about some of the data. There's some confidential details in some of it that I thought would be more appropriate to discuss in non-public.
I think this might be the longest superintendent's report I've ever done, so I'm going to say...
Are we at 6:30?
Yeah.
Perfect timing.
Yep.
So we'll do the public hearing right now. Thank you very much.
Good job, team. Okay. Nope, that's the wrong.
All right. Since we are at 6:30, policy requires us to hold a public hearing for donations over a certain amount of money. So we're going to transition to our public hearing for the seminary grant donation for the amount of $23,613.50.
Oh, Jen.
Okay. Hi. No, sorry. Thanks for having me again. So you should have received some of these, these documents that I have up here. So every year, the Sanborn Seminary trustees have a grant application process for staff, and staff can request all sorts of really neat sort of enrichment type of things. Sometimes it's equipment to help, you know, improve some, some pieces in the classroom. Really, there's really not a lot that they can't apply for. And actually, at this year's meeting, the trustees expressed some ideas around changing the grant application to make it even more open to what a person could request and, and the opportunities that the, the funding could be used for. So this year, there were five proposals. And so it was a lighter year than in some years past. And the music department has really had success over the past few years with having some artists in residence. So that's the, the first project. And they made a, a really awesome video that talks about the, the impact that having these professional guests in to work with the kids in the music department have, have made for the students, some instrument experts and whatnot. Then we had the Sanborn Submariners. They requested this year some really specific diving equipment. So, and each of them had applications, or you could read the details. So Mr. Enright here just requested some, a little bit more high-tech, better equipment for the submarine, submariner team to be able to use. And then Megan Petrucci for Life and Environmental Science. They want to continue work on growing environmental literacy. And so you can read about their goals and their project. So, and the community benefits. And it's basically the cost for them to register to take part in the, the national movement. They are trying to get their hands on a heavy-duty expandable hose for their group and a hose key so that they can basically work in the greenhouse out back that we already have. So it's also to support work that is already happening out back in the greenhouse. And then probably the most ambitious grant is the one, Mr. Kelly, on his last, on his last way out of Sanborn, worked with Mr. McDonough to propose a new car lift. So they put the car lift in the project. So, and they did have a picture. There's a picture somewhere. I saw it on here. But basically, so that they can continue doing some of the really great work that they do in the automotive wing. The one that they have is just, it, it's ready. It's, they've had it for a number of years, and it's time. And so this is a project that the, the trustees said that they would be willing to fund and to support, because it's a costly item. But I don't know if you know the Cars for Grad program we do here. So our autobody students, if we're fortunate, we're able to get a car donated, which has been amazing. And then the students in the autobody classes, they tune it up, they get it on the road. And so it's really important for them to have the right equipment to make sure that they can really get, get that, that happening. So those are our proposals. Yeah. So we have the bees, we have the Beehive. And so part of the goal of the trustees is to help get projects up and going, but not necessarily like sustain them, right? So then we sort of step in, and so I ask Ms. Petrucci every year, like, what are some of the absolute necessities you need to keep, to keep up with the Beehive? It's pretty minimal. And because she already has the suits and all the, the big-ticket items, so... Yeah, so we still have the bee club, absolutely. Yep, she had to... Yes. Can go see it, yep.
I remember that presentation, I think it was the end of the...
Yep.
But before, can I just say one quick thing? I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Sanborn Seminary trustees. This is a significant sum of money, and it makes a huge difference for the kids. So when we think about the things that make Sanborn unique and fantastic, some of the things that come to mind for me right away are the shop classes that we have. We offer woodworking, welding, automotive, and we have incredible opportunities for kids at the Seaco School of Technology, the band, the Beehive, and the submarines. I mean, it's really amazing for a small high school to have so many great opportunities for kids. And so the Sanborn Seminary trustees truly make a significant difference in the lives of these kids. And I just, I just wanted to personally thank them for these donations.
Thank you.
If there's anyone from the public that has any comments. Okay. All right, so other than a huge, huge, huge thank you to the seminary. I mean, this, this is all just fantastic. I mean, the things that are being supported are really quite amazing, and I love the fact that the two-post lift is going in because that is safety. So that's really important that we can continue that for our students in a safe. So if someone would like to make a motion to accept the donation?
Make a motion to accept the donation?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you as well. This is amazing. I know for a lot of students, their experience here at Sanborn, incredible.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, and thank you to the trustees. And they have a new website coming out soon that our Sanborn students helped with, so very exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to do those right now. Do we have any, any reports? I cut Tom, Tom's done.
Yes, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Oh.
No, thank you.
Okay, you can't, don't let him influence you.
I'm allowed to laugh.
Tell you. I know, not you.
Can't control the laughter.
I know, but if you, you're encouraging him already in this meeting.
No, I have to, I have to make nice with my name.
Ah, okay.
There you go.
Yes.
Good one, good one.
Sorry to get the drop on them.
All right, so no subcommittee reports? All right. Okay, Maya.
Whoa.
All right.
Your turn. I mean, the major thing is that we made it through four days of school.
There you go.
But basically, things are going, running much smoother. All the student schedules are almost figured out and like ready, we're almost full swing, ready to rumble. Yesterday, the girls' soccer team had their first win 2-0. So nice shout-out for the new freshman goalie, Gabby Saints here. Tomorrow, the boys play at 4:00 home here. I forget who it's against. And then Friday night, we're doing Friday Night Lights for the football game. It's a blackout theme. It starts at 6:00, I believe, or 6:30.
6:00.
6:00. And then the girls' soccer team plays before them home at 4:00. So people could make a double appearance. And that's basically all that's really going on this week. Student council has been planning homecoming, so I'm sure parents will be reached out to about different donations for all of their grades, all the grades. That's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. All right, first public comment. All right. So any pub, any, and if you are a resident, have a student in the district, or are an employee of the district, yes, and as long as it pertains to something on the agenda, you're good to go.
So there's a few of us here, we're...
Sorry, could you just state your name first and the town you're from?
Yep, Caitlin Eldridge. I live in Newton.
Great.
So there's a few of us here who are here in hopes to discuss the bus issue with the new charter school and the middle schoolers not being able to get on the bus. So I guess that would be my comment. We're here in hopes that there's going to be a solution to the middle schoolers not having buses provided for them, since, you know, the people in the district, we were told that the district would provide transportation to those students attending the charter school.
Okay. If anyone has anything else they would like to add?
Yep, I see someone else. I could see him, I could see him getting up, so.
Hi, my name is Scott Sigurin. I'm Newton, New Hampshire. My grand, my granddaughter, guardian of my granddaughter. And I stood here commenting to the school board two and a half years ago about the sixth graders coming to this school here and the busing issue that would occur at that period of time. Thankfully, there's been success in that. But now, I have an eighth grader that cannot get on a bus, and your rules or your regulations that you have in place for busing were not updated two and a half years ago to the standards that you did of having sixth graders on the bus with 12th graders or 11th graders or 10th graders. That rule was not updated two and a half years ago. So what we're asking is that not only does it get updated for what you presently have, but also to include that middle school kids can be dropped off at the charter school. I think it's kind of unfair that some kids cannot get schooling. And if I'm not mistaken, RSA New Hampshire 189.6 does say that it is a statutory and constitutional requirement and obligation of all public schools in the state of New Hampshire to provide busing for all kids. The charter school is a public school that falls under this district, and the folks that would have got busing to come here should be allowed to have busing to bring them to the charter school. So, you know, you have parents that are in these schools that have first graders, fifth graders, seventh graders. So these parents can put a first grader on a bus, but they can't put their sixth, seventh, or eighth graders on a bus for the week and a half that we've had school. So we're looking to see if you can upgrade your rules to be, bring in from two and a half years ago, bring it up to date, and also include these middle school schools, kids in that to allow transportation for them. Thank you.
Tara Palma from Kingston. I know personally, I had to change my work hours in order to drop my eighth grader off because she can't ride the bus with my third grader. There's also parents that, we know one parent specifically that had to make the hard decision to pull their children out because there was no busing. And it's just, I think, made life a lot harder when going in we were promised. And now, again, there's a lot of kids at that school that have, or parents that have multiple grade children, and one or two of their children can ride the bus, but the other can't. So again, what he said, we're just hoping for an update and to allow these kids to get to school. I know personally, I grew up in Hampstead. We had two schools, central school, middle school, but we only had one bus route. So it was K through 8 on the bus every morning and every afternoon. And the amount of kids there are, I feel, in Kingston and Newton, and how many buses there are, I mean, I think we're looking at maybe what, like one to three kids per bus at the most? So I really personally don't feel that it would be a huge issue. It's not like they would be going and taking over the whole bus system, because a lot of kids are from out of other towns too, not just Kingston and Newton. We're just fighting for us. So, that's all.
Comment to that, the buses, the bus still stops and hails.
Every morning.
Expecting my granddaughter to get on the bus. That bus has less than half the...
We have five kids that our bus stops.
Parents have to...
Can I have people come up to the microphone? Sorry.
So, in our neighborhood, some of them can't get rides because they have to work. So parents are volunteering to walk these kids to school. And so, but to see a bus stop and ask if they want to get on the bus, of course, we have to say, no, we're not allowed to get on the bus. So the bus drivers didn't even know about this rule either, and the bus is less than half-full, probably a quarter filled. So we're not looking at having any extra expenditures done in the district. We're just looking at that rule. I just wanted to...
One, one other comment. Thank you.
I did also just want to mention, you know, when you guys did the whole merge between Newton and Kingston, you allow our middle school children to get on with the high schoolers, and that's not an issue. So I, I feel like the age gap we're asking for is, is in general the same. You're asking my 11th year, my 11-year-old to get on the bus with 18-year-olds if they still ride the bus. So I don't get what the difference is between asking for this new charter school to be allowed the same. And you also didn't give us any notice at all about this. Up until literally the day of school, we all assumed that we had transportation for in-district children only. That, that's what the school understood, and that's what we as the parents understood. So it was kind of really unexpected and put a really like hardship on a lot of our schedules for you guys to just up and say right before school started, no, your sixth through eighth graders can't get on the bus because it's a elementary school technically. But they're not that young compared to 11-year-olds versus the same as 11-year-olds getting on the bus with 18-year-olds. So I, I agree. I don't think it's much that we're asking just to allow our kids from sixth to eighth grade to get on the buses that are already running and expecting our kids to get on anyways. Thank you.
All right, if there is no one else, we will move to all of our superfund policies.
I think Attorney O'Shaughnessy is here.
Did you say something?
Well, that's, it's on...
We'll get to that policy.
We're going to go to the...
We'll talk when we get to that.
We got a seat for you over here.
Bussing?
No, I'm just talking about, yeah, that's fine.
Should we let them know that we will comment, or that there will be?
Yeah. Oh, I'll get ready for you. Let's start reading.
Okay.
Hi.
Oh. Hello. Lights. Good evening.
Hi.
I think you're up, Ms. O'Shaughnessy.
We just start, we're just starting policies.
So you're up. You get to do all the A policies, the J policy.
Should we?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dawn, should it be? We're not ignoring you. Why does that work?
We always allow public comment to, to take into account for when we go to deliberate on the item that comes up on...
Yeah, we just, I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that we're not ignoring all those comments. It's just a procedural matter that... Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that we're not ignoring all those comments. It's just a procedural matter that when we get to the policy related to the comments that you had, that's when we'll talk about it. So we're not just like, thanks. And you know, later.
And we all took notes and we appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
Encourage more parents to come out like you're coming today. So, you know, we can hear what you want. All right.
Thank you. Oh, slides.
Oh. You're going to review it. What's just the time period? Because people, you know, parents are are really struggling here to get their kids to the school. Is this a, is there a time period?
Yeah.
We just have gotten it to on the agenda. It's on the agenda and we'll talk about all that when we get to.
Okay. Oh, I thought we were there. That's why we all spoke. This is what we were trying to help you. All right. Really, it depends on how fast Jim can talk. Just wondering. All right, we'll get to it.
So.
Get a move on.
I was planning to be very long winded, but I'll try to make this quick. Um. So in the process right now, I understand that you're reviewing um, the updates to your Title IX policies right now, uh, just to sort of give you a bit of background, you have Title IX policies. We don't call them Title IX policies. We call them non discrimination. Um, and non sexual harassment, anti discrimination policies. They are part of your AC series. You have a number of them. And what you're actually doing is updating those policies in response to um, new Title IX regulations that were finally uh, released in April of this past year and which went into effect on August first. So Tom, if you want to advance to the next slide. Just quickly, um, Title IX is a federal law. It says no person shall be discriminated basically on the basis of sex. In any education program receiving federal financial assistance. So it's a, it's, it's classic um, funding legislation, right? So it's a spending bill. We receive districts receive, New Hampshire receives millions of dollars from the feds and, and as a result, they impose lots of obligations and requirements, including Title IX. And your receipt of all of your federal funds is contingent upon you complying with Title IX. And you have to sign um, compliance documents every year saying I, I'll, we'll comply with the IDA and Title IX and a whole host of other uh, federal regulations. So Title IX is one of those regulations. Uh, next, um. So the question has come up, why do you need a new policy? Um, so the, the, I'm a lawyer, so the real answer is because the new regulation says this is it, fourteen CFR, uh, section twelve fifty-three. CFR stands for Code of Federal Regulations. That's how that, that's like the title, um, section fourteen. It says you need to um, designate at least one employee basically as your Title IX coordinator. And that you shall notify your students and employees of the name, office address, and telephone number of that employee. And you can have design, you can have Title IX other designees, but that's one of the main things. You, the law wants districts to advertise um, who your Title IX coordinator is so that if you uh, if there's a student who wants to make a complaint or a parent who wants to make a complaint or an employee, they know who to make that complaint to. That's like, that's really one of the bigger purposes. The second thing the law mandates is that you adopt and publish grievance procedures, providing for prompt and equitable resolution of student employee complaints alleging Title IX violations. So you, you are, it uses the word recipient. You're the recipient. Um, you're the school district and it requires you explicitly, um, unlike other policies, you're required to adopt a, a grievance procedure. That's the policy is it's a grievance procedure. It's literally here's how you make a complaint. Here's who you make a complaint to. And here's how we process a complaint. Here are the standards that we use to review complaints. And here's the outcome. And that grievance procedure and what needs to go in the grievance procedure is outlined in Title IX. So rather than think of it as you're adopting a policy because the law changed, you have to think of it as the law requires you to adopt a grievous procedure. It mandates what the procedure is and your policy is basically our version of how your staff should follow that. It's like we've kind of created the model policy because we train your staff and guide them when they're following Title IX. Anyway, I already mentioned the dates. Um. There's some question out there because there, there's some federal litigation going on around um, Title IX. So um, you're, so there are a bunch of school districts across the twenty-six states that have um, been enjoined from enforcing the new Title IX rules. Um, New Hampshire is not one of the states. I put an asterisk there. It's kind of odd, but there are a couple of New Hampshire schools, not school districts that were named as defendants in that litigation. I don't know why. I represent a couple of those districts where those schools are located. One of them, for instance, is Belmont High School, which is part of Shaker Regional School District. It's literally a named defendant. So somehow they're involved, but there are no New Hampshire school districts and New Hampshire is not one of the states enjoined. Um, yours, therefore you are still bound by Title IX. It is still the law of the land with respect to um, how you process alleged violations of sex based harassment. Like that is the law you have to follow. Um, unless there's some other lawsuit or some other injunction, that's going to continue to be the law you have to follow. Um. The, just so you know, the Supreme Court, there was an appeal of that injunction. The states appealed saying, well, we, we think um, that, that decision should be overturned. And the Supreme Court said we're not going to overturn it. That injunction is going to stay in, in effect. So we're in this weird space admittedly where there's two sets of, of kind of Title IX regulations in the United States. To kind of put a finer point on it, and I'll get to that in this bullet point list. By the way, the new Title IX regulation is hundreds of hundreds of maybe thousands of pages long. I haven't read it. I'm not gonna ever read it. Um, I have associates and attorneys and partners in my office that are literally experts in Title IX across the country. So like, I am not a Title IX expert. I know enough to be dangerous. I know enough to talk about it. But if you want to know everything about Title IX, Megan Glenn, happy to come in, talk at you guys for hours about everything you could possibly want to know. I had her help me put this together so I could talk to you about it and I'm, I've been to her trainings. But I'm not a Title IX expert. Um. What has changed? Because this is important. Um, there's more conduct now that counts as sex discrimination and sexual, sex harassment. Um, so long and short of it is I'll get to that, but that's kind of the bullet point. They've sort of lowered the bar a little bit for what could be considered sexual harassment. It's not quite as hard to prove as a student or employee that you were sexually harassed or discriminated against. They lowered the bar a little bit and I'll explain the legal standard really quickly later in another slide. The term sex discrimination has been added as a new term. Um, sex, and this is the part, as everyone can imagine, and there's going to be no surprises unless you've been hibernating for the last couple of years. That sex discrimination now includes prohibit prohibitions explicitly in the regulation against sex stereotyping. It's uh, sex, sexual orientation and gender identity based discrimination. As we know, those terms, the gender identity one is, is controversial right now. We don't view this as lawyers as a change to the law in New Hampshire because both, both RSA three fifty-four A, which is New Hampshire's quote law against discrimination in RSA one ninety-three thirty-eight, which we've talked about, which was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, already explicitly prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. The, that was a new law, like that wasn't the law and then New Hampshire adopted the law. So when they adopted it at the time, there was a question about whether Title IX, you know, covered or prohibited gender identity based discrimination. Um, but New Hampshire just dealt with it on its own. So that kind of answers the question from a legal perspective of whether transgender, gender identity based discrimination is protected by state law or by any law. And it, it is, so there's not a lot of room in there for us to like really like, we don't really in our office like debate that. It's just, it just is. So um, the district has an obligation to respond to remediate effects of sex discrimination or harassment. And this is a newer standard. This is a lower standard when any employee in the district has knowledge of conduct that reasonably may constitute discrimination. That's a kind of a low standard because then it's like, what is re, you, you have knowledge that something may constitute sexual discrimination. The old standard was actual knowledge. There's also another standard that has long existed where you had to exhibit deliberate indifference to, to actual knowledge. That's a kind of a high bar for any kid or employee to sort of reach. Reasonably may is a lower bar. I'm not judging it as good or bad, but it's just, it is. That's the standard we're going to follow. That's the standard. We're training your, your employees and we're training your administrator, administrators to follow. Um. Question was always, what about conduct outside of school? We always told people that if the conduct outside of school has an impact on the student's ability to access school, if it crosses into the schoolyard, you have an obligation to at least remediate it. That what we always advised is now codified in Title IX expressly. It's written into the regulation. Um, this is a really big change. The, the next one, it's a shorter, more streamlined process. It used to be sixty days. Now it's much, much more likely to be like a ten or twenty day process from receipt of complaint through investigation and like conversations with the parties disposition of the outcome remediation. It used to be this crazy long process where gather evidence, exchange evidence, investigation draft, show the draft to the other parties. Like it was a back and forth process that took months and months and months. This is going to be more streamlined. It's more similar to, and Jen's out there, it's more similar to how you process your bullying. Like you're just going to process these complaints and, and move on instead of them dragging out and, and you're not um, probably going to have to hire a lawyer every time to advise you how to comply with the reg. The old reg was so complicated that like you had to go through it ten times before you knew how to do it on your own. Now it's going to be more streamlined. Um, we consider that better for the district. Schools must have a policy regarding pregnant students. You now have an affirmative obligation to provide a pregnant student with title coordinator's contact information upon learning of a student's pregnancy. That's part of your proposed policy JIE. Okay, so that's in a nutshell what's changed. Those are the new things. I told you what are the big deals, what aren't the big deals? Next slide. I already highlighted the um, the new definition where I said like they lowered the bar. Um, you have, there's two kinds of sexual harassment. I'm literally giving you a crash course in like discrimination law. But basically there's the old fashioned, what used to call, they call it quid pro quo harassment, which is like you do something for me and, and I'll do something for you. So it was like the, I don't want to get into the details, but there's quid pro quo sexual harassment. And then there's hostile environment, sexual harassment, which is like your school environment or your work environment is so subjectively and objectively offensive that it has the effect of interfering with your job or education, right? So that's like it's so bad. I'm getting harassed so much by these people. I, I can't, I'm not comfortable. I can't go to school. The new standard is based on the totality, totality of the circumstances. It has to be subjectively and objectively offensive. Which means not only you have to find it offensive, but the reasonable objective person needs to find it offensive. And it's so severe or pervasive, right? It's so bad one time thing, or it's so pervasive multiple. It doesn't have to be severe and pervasive that it limits or denies a person's ability to participate in or benefit from an education program or activity. The old standard said it had to be so severe pervasive and objectively offensive. So it's an and standard. It's not or that it effectively denies a person's ability to participate or benefit from an education, effectively denies is like super high bar. Like, how do you show that you're just like literally denied an education? So that standard was too high and now it's come down to be sort of a more reasonable better standard, I think, for employees and kids. Okay? What has not changed? Am I going fast enough or too fast? Good. Yeah. School districts are legally required to adopt a title, point a title line coordinator. You're required to have a non discrimination policy. These are your current policies. We're going to replace them with updated policies. School, or that's what we're recommending. You're legally required to have a title line grievance procedure. Those are your procedures. Um, you're legally required to publish the name of your title line coordinator. That's all, it's, that's kind of repeat, right? So I'm just highlighting what's changed, what's not changed. That's already part of current policy. Questions? It's a little repetitive. Um, penalties, that what can happen to you. OCR complaint. And just for, just for like, for lawyers who are representing families, kids, employees, the process is what they get hung up on, right? It's like you were supposed to do this within three days. You didn't do this. Your policy doesn't say that. And so, so we want policies in place so that you can avoid um, penalties and lawsuits. Next, um, summary. This is the one I want to kind of leave it on. Uh, so summary, Title IX applies in New Hampshire. No injunction for Sanborn. Mandates a grievance process. Your policy is your grievance process. Mandates designation. Your policy designates new time on pro, new title line process is more streamlined. Has updated new definitions, covers more behaviors and protects pregnant students. Policies ensure uniform compliance, fairness and protection from legal issues. That's kind of like a generic catchall for why generally policies are a good idea. Um, for something as big as harassment and sex based harassment and discrimination. You know, any kind of discrimination, we think it's a good idea to have a policy and a process in place to follow. Is there anything, do I have another one or is it just my, thank you? Hold on, let me look. All right, that's it. You can go back to the summary.
Um, can you go back to slide seven? I think it's seven. Uh, six, man. Sorry. Good. What, what was the penalty slide?
Oh, number eight. I, I breezed through that.
You did. So my, my question is, um, you know, what if we decided to have our own policies that, that don't align Title IX? What are the possible penalties and for the district?
Um. You're not, if you don't comply with Title IX, um, OCR investigation is, is probably I think, that's why it's first. It's like the most, like one of the most likely things that'll happen. Someone will complain to the Office of Civil Rights. They'll open an investigation. They'll start putting their nose under the tent and we'll, we'll have to manage that or whoever you want to hire will have to manage that investigation process. Um.
What's estimated cost of that?
Um. Thirty, forty thousand dollars in legal fees and then they'll issue, um, the way you deal with those, I, and I, I think OCR is still open to it. It's typically you try to resolve them really early on. And my resolution, my, the resolution is like, oh, sorry. Um, you know, the board, I tried to come up with some clever way of explaining the board was kind of interested in doing its own thing. Um, although this is a public, so that's going to be a little hard to do. But you say, you know, the easiest resolution is compliance. We will adopt the, I'll meet with the board. Um, we'll adopt a policy and compliance with the regulations. They'll say, okay, that would be a really fast way to off track an OCR investigation. They may insist on um, uh, kind of main like tracking and maintaining like contact where you have to update them periodically on the status of your of your policies, but thirty, forty thousand dollars in legal fees to, just to manage an OCR complaint. Um. And if, if you refuse to comply, I mean, they have enforcement authority. Uh, the penalties can start getting pretty ugly and I don't usually go there because I don't have any districts that wouldn't just comply.
Any potential like loss of funding?
That's, that's literally the, the hammer, right? They could revoke funding. I, I don't, I've never seen it happen, but that's what they would tell us. If you don't comply, we will revoke fund.
Okay.
Um.
Which would be in the millions.
Which is millions for the district.
Yeah, millions and millions of dollars. So.
I just want to make sure we all understand that.
There's compensatory damages. I mean, the real harm is where you have to start throwing money at people because you haven't complied law. Like that's where it get like the, the first defense in any discrimination harassment lawsuit, the first defense and the best defense is that we took prompt remedial action. We complied with our policies and procedures, which means we, we follow the law. We follow our policy. We did an investigation. We took remedial action. We tried to support the people and make sure it doesn't happen again and, and provided training to the employees. Um, support and training for the students. Like that's the defense. Like that's how you defend against these cases.
Very similar to ocean.
It's all, it's all, it's all the same concept. So if you don't do those things, then that's when you start looking at really big damages.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for Jim?
Just wanted to clarify this. So this has all policies that were
the A policies and the JIE policy that based off of an A.
Those were all new. Those were all adopted in two thousand and eight response to that version of the regs, which was just a very onerous kind of, it's just no, nobody's liked it and I you have a whole new set of procedures you have to follow now. Basically, it re, it revamps a lot of it.
Maybe you touched on it, but who are the parties to this? Is it faculty, students, 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 faculty?
Yes.
Administration, all of the above?
Yeah, so if you go back to slide one or two. It protects, it protects, slide two, number two, not, yeah. It's, first of all, it protects students, but it also protects employees. And so it doesn't matter if you have a parent sexually harassing a teacher or a parent sexually harassing a student or a student sexually harassing a teacher. All those people are, your employees and your students are, you have an obligation to protect them and provide them a safe, a safe place to go to school and work. And Title IX is one of the laws that puts that obligation on you. So, answer.
Yeah, so anyone in the district can bring one of these complaints.
Yeah. We sort of, it's sort of like, is supposed to, it's a, so like a, a, a legal change like that is like a, see, change, it's, this is intended to make the process easier for, for folks to bring complaints and to know who to bring them to and understand how they're processed and what their rights are. And it, as for us is, as long as there's a standard we can follow and we know what the standard is, like we just apply the standard. So when it was, uh, effectively denies, then we would apply that standard and we would deny Title IX complaints all the time. You also still had an anti discrimination policy. So sometimes we would say, that's denied for purposes of Title IX, which has this high standard, but we're still going to address it under our, our general anti discrimination policy. That's a whole, that's a whole confusing A, A or B process. This will kind of eliminate a lot of that. All of it's just going to be done under Title IX unless it's discrimination on the basics, basis of other protected characteristics, race, religion.
As we have policies on aggressive behavior, bullying, some other, those like crossover or?
I mean, we, we meet with your administrative team like once a year and literally work through how to deal with misconduct versus bullying versus Title IX. And there's like flow charts and ways that we train administrators to deal with it. So is there crossover? Yeah, sure, sure, like, at, any Title IX violation is going to be bullying. Not every bullying is going to be Title IX or just every discrimination is going to, but Title IX is just one kind of discrimination. I can, we have Venn diagrams, created flow charts.
Um, and that's why you're here, because.
Awkward video, like.
Those videos.
It's like ju, literally for Megan and I, just when we got everybody like to a good spot, right? Jen, like everyone can do this, they changed the reg and we're like, now we're running around trying to get every, and I'm not complaining because that's what we do living. So it's like, you know, it's great. Um, but they, they just changed it again. So now we're retraining everybody on the new regulations.
Sorry. A motion to policies, but what someone from the policy committee like, because you can move a group of the policies instead of just one.
Can, are these supposed to be clickable?
Yeah, they are. Although I couldn't, mine worked.
Yeah, if we're not going to go through them one by one.
I got, can only get it.
So just, um, on, I think it was policy A C A A, like when, when, and I, I read through our policy, right? But per Title IX, like when would a parent get notified? I didn't see that.
Like, it's typically, and, and like literally Jen, I may need you here because I again, don't train on how to, on how to do this. But for younger kids, it's often the parents that are bringing the complaint and typically they're notified immediately. And you're saying, would you like us to process this as a Title IX complaint? And we are looking for them to say yes, and then we go ahead and do that. Sometimes they say no, then we treat it maybe as bullying. Maybe they say, I don't want to do that either. And then maybe we're just trying to deal with it in sort of normal course of like relationships with the younger kid. So, but the parents are notified very early on in the process. I can't point to the place in the policy, but like, we're not processing and doing Title IX investigations without parental environment.
Yeah, I just.
Like it's, no, this is a parent driven or employee driven process. Tell me if I'm wrong.
They have to agree, so like a parent, so typically what happens if we encounter anything sounds like Title IX, we call our title line coordinator, who then will give them the scoop and he, Troy, will immediately call the parents or within like hours or 24 hours. It's, it's, it's timely and then we'll ask, we'll let the parent know. Um, and in the meantime, I, as the school administrator, probably would have also called the parent and would say, hey, I want you to know there was an issue today in the playground with little Timmy and Joey and Steven or whoever, pick a name. Um, and you know, they're going to be, the Title IX coordinator is going to be calling you, but here's how we're going to deal with it in the meantime, because we have to take protective measures and do something like that. And in the meantime, Troy will also be called to the parent and then say, would you like to do the Title IX process? Here's kind of what entail and how it works. And then the parent gets to decide if they want to pursue it in Title IX or if they are okay with like, here's what we're going to do regardless, because it fits into other buckets, right? Because always Title IX, it, it's usually always, there's bullying, harassment, both. Um, it's never just a Title IX, right? There's always like another town. So does that make sense?
Does, uh, like I made that assumption, I just didn't read it in the policy, right? So in my mind, I'm thinking a high school student comes in and says, oh, I have a problem, but don't tell my parents. So what I'm hearing is you're telling the parents.
I'm telling the parent.
That's it, to make sure, okay.
Yeah.
Really tough thing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so like the title not like any, and the title line policy bullying, like, unlike other things we've talked about, those law, we're not, we're not doing formal investigations triggered, like triggered by federal law or the bullying without involving parents. Like, it's like, we, that, that's where this process starts. You know, and, and sometimes we would even follow up from an initial call, parent called and said this, we would follow up and say, I'd say, why don't Jen, why, why don't you call the parent back? Or why doesn't Troy call them back? And I know they initiated it, but we really need them to like, sign on the dotted line to some degree to say they want this to be done under Title IX. And the way we, we explain is here's a link to all of our policies. You have to understand that it's a process. This is how the process goes. These are the steps and they may see, say, I don't want to go through all that. Okay. So if you don't want to do that, we're, we're going to do a bullying so we can deal with the behavior. And a lot of times parents are like, that makes more sense to me, let's do that. But parents are right, we're not doing it without parental involvement. Troy? Uh-oh.
I just want to clarify something. So just so you're with Title IX bullying, state level sexual harassment, none of it has a mandatory punishment. And I want, and that's something a lot of people don't realize. They assume if something goes under sexual harassment, this is going to happen. It does not, they are just investigation avenues that we have to follow that have certain differences on what information we share between families. Uh, the biggest one for Title IX is anything that is shared by one party has to be reviewed by the other party unedited and back and forth. And that's what, that's probably one of the bigger differences in Title IX. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that it's, a lot of times I talk with parents about it. And they say, so if I go down this route, does that mean the student will get this? And they said, no, I, I, we're not talking about the end result. It means we'll investigate it this way. It could end up in whatever our disciplinary action is. And that goes for anything, anything we do. Uh, that's up to the disciplinary action is separate from the investigation. I just wanted to be clear on that different server.
Thanks Troy.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a grievance, it's a process.
Yeah. Thanks.
So on A C A A, I have some, a couple of questions. The change in language, um, for what are protected categories? Age and economic status were protected categories and no longer protected categories for harassment?
Um.
Age and economic, economic status are redlined in the new list of protected categories.
There's Title IX, I have to look, I'm not looking.
It's how A C A A is written.
Is it R, which one, A C A?
A C A A.
R one or R two?
S R S D file, A C A A.
Hey Jen, that is not working.
I don't, yeah.
I have R one or two.
I just hate those types of like buckets, because if you leave out a bucket, then it suggests or implies that, oh, now I can discriminate on the basis of age or economic status. I'm just wondering whether those are taken out also. We have race and color. What's color? Is there, is that different than race? The distinction between race and color.
I mean, to the extent these are, these are, um, uh, so socially created categories or characteristics, like, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a characteristic. So skin color is a characteristic, race is a characteristic. They're just, that's it. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be, this is your race. It could be, this is your skin color. So I don't know the answer to why economic discrimination other than, it's not a, it's not a traditionally protected class under federal law. Um, economic status is protected under state law, but it's, this is like getting really in the weeds. It's not protected by the New Hampshire law against discrimination. It's like a throw in, in the, in the State Board of Education statutes. So I, I think what we've done here is said, well, let's, let's not include it here. Um, let's include it elsewhere. So I, I presume that's why, um. So what was the other one?
And age?
I don't, I don't know, I have no idea.
Well, social economic is more of like, if we're thinking from a D E I component, that's really where social economic comes from.
Yeah, it's like, it's not a protected, it's not a legally protected characteristic. I, I don't know why, and I can ask Mike. I don't know why those are excluded or were they taken out of this version? I can get those answers for you.
So Ken, that was, that was A C A R one, is that what you're reading or R two?
No, A C A A.
If I looked at it.
A C A A.
A C A A, R one or R two?
Neither, just A A.
Just A A.
The first one. Um, and Rick, to answer your question, um, about timeline. Um, so in A C A A, under harassment, they do reference in here. Um, says these behaviors are also addressed in board policies, J I C I A, weapons violence and safety and J I C K bullying. J I C K bullying has a very specific timeline that has to be followed.
And that timeline involves parent.
Parental notification within 48 hours in writing or the phone or by mail.
All right, so. So I can't help when I'm standing up there with my.
So, so the.
It's clear in, it's clear in J I C K.
Okay.
Can answer that.
Yeah, so it sort of just goes right to it, right?
Yeah, so I think that's why it's not.
If it's, makes sense, no, I get it.
For students.
Mm-hmm.
And age-based discrimination only protects from the age of 40 and older in employment. So, you know, kids can still tease each other for being younger. It's not, it's not, it's not discrimination, it's bullying, right? If you, if you're, if kids are making fun of each other because of their age, it would still be a personal characteristic. Bullying purposes, but it's not a form of discrimination students, unless you have students who are over 40.
Draw some Venn diagrams for me.
What's that?
Venn diagrams again.
The 40, yeah, the 40 is like over here, inside of the circle.
Well, that hurts my feelings.
I think those are the answers.
All right, are there any other questions, comments before we look for a motion? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to move, um, all the A policies, N J I E, which are agenda items, seven point two point one through seven point two point eight?
So moved.
For first and second read, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Ooh, that was a.
I don't know, Phyllis, you get to debate who, about that one. Um, all right, uh, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, now finally, E E A. Um, so that is the student transportation policy. Um.
Do we?
Yeah, if you want to.
Well, I think.
We need a motion first.
I think, um, it was talked about in policy. Um, and brought here. Um, and we can, I think we recommended it as modified in here. I don't have a modified version.
Yeah, the only modification was the town.
Heather, are you able to click on the links?
Yeah, I have it.
Do you need guide, like guidance on that law?
On what?
Is this charter school transportation?
Yeah.
RSA 193.
Can you just explain what the law is?
I think, I think that was on, yeah.
So I know you referenced, um, RSA 189 six, uh, transportation of pupils. Uh, the local school district shall furnish transportation to all pupils in grades one through eight who live more than two miles from the school to which they are assigned. And that's where it gets sticky.
So I can answer that.
Yeah, attendance at charter, so and then in section 194 B two, Roman numeral five, attendus, attendance at a chartered public school for the purposes of transportation shall not constitute assignment under the provisions of, provisions of RSA 189 six and RSA 189 eight. Um, pupils who reside in the school district in which the chartered public school is located shall be provided transportation to that school by the district on the same terms and conditions as provided for non-chartered public schools in the district and utilizing the same regular bus schedules and routes that are provided to pupils attending non-chartered public schools within the district. Um, so those are, that, those are the laws that dictate transportation, um, and what were required and not required.
What does that mean?
So that means.
Does that mean layman's?
So, yeah, Jim and layman's.
You want, I mean, you want to keep going, Dawn?
I, I might as well.
I, no, I can explain, I mean, I, I can, thi, this was part of, um, this was a big amendment to the charter school statute back in 2016. Um, I think if I, I'm not mistaken, it might've been S B 300. Um, and, and it's a, it's a constant source of debate and there's been attempts to amend the statute at the legislature over the years because it's, it is a little bit weird to understand what that means. But what it basically has, we've come to kind of, we've come to define it, the same terms and conditions basically means like, what's your policy and procedure, right? So you can't create more restrictive rules or more restrictive policies for chartered students. Um, they have a right to jump on the school bus and with, with district kids um, and travel the same routes as district kids. And you, you know, the idea is that you work with the charter school to kind of accommodate, accommodate them and get them to the school. Um, that doesn't always work in a big district. Sometimes it's like kids jump on, they get to a centralized location and maybe there's some, like they have to kind of figure out, but you, you allow them to be on the routes. But if you have a policy where you're, you're, um, providing bus transportation based on age breakdown, that's your, those are the terms and condition. You don't have to change those terms, you can't create more restrictive terms. You, you can change the terms, but the law doesn't require you to, is basically where that is. And I, so I think you're in the right legal space to have the conversation.
So we're not out of compliance?
No.
Okay.
I mean, there's, that's a really tricky question because like, I don't know all the details of what's, Tom and I talked briefly about that earlier today, like we didn't have, you know, some of this is attorney client privilege, but like I haven't had like super long in-depth analysis of what's going on. So I, before I say, yes, you're in compliance, I'd want to know exactly.
Right.
Like exactly what you're doing, um.
And I, I'm just specifically referring to the comment that was made, what a stat sheet that was read.
So if you're allowing charter school students to, um, be on the bus with, with, uh, follow it like on your normal bus routes and use the bus to get to their school. Um, you're picking them up and dropping them off at their location on your bus routes. You don't have to create new bus routes, but if it's not complicated to do that, typically school districts do that, right? So, but you could say, here's our, here's our pickup in all the charter kids, like three of four of them, you can all head to that spot. You can walk, you know, a block to get there, like you don't have to create a new route. Um, and if you're doing that and your policy is you're only transporting elementary school kids through a certain grade and then the older kids through a certain grade hypothetically, right? I think is what you're doing.
Yeah, it's, our, our policy reads elementary students, grades K through five will not be required to write. Yeah, it's, our, our policy reads elementary students, grades K through five will not be required to ride on the same bus with secondary school students, grade six through twelve.
Yeah, those are the terms and conditions. So you don't have to, you're in compliance right now, in my legal opinion. And the question is, do you want to change your policy? So I think that's perfectly, you're, you're not in violation of the law and the conversation, this is the appropriate place to have that conversation.
Okay. And for clarification, um, the memorial school bus typically is grades three through five, but for the, um, charter school, we put K through five students on that bus.
Because the policy wouldn't prohibit that.
The policy does not prohibit.
So that's why I think, I think if you were like, we're, we're only doing, like, that would be an example where like you're, you're over, you're like reading too much into it.
Right. So that what is being asked is for them, us to put six through eighth graders on the bus with K through five.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a policy decision for, it, it literally, I've heard other districts do it, like I've, it's up to you if, if you think it's a safety concern, if, if you got to look at the number of kids on there. All the obvious stuff that you would do and your administration would talk about supervision, typically, school buses have a bus driver. Um, there's, there's not a lot of training involved there. It's little to none, no disrespect to bus drivers, but like they're not supervising kids that are operating a large bus. So you have to look at those questions and decide whether it's a safety issue or you think you want to change your policy or not.
I have a question. Did the, do the particulars of this situation that we're talking about relate only to the integration of kids of different age levels or if it were the case that like, we're not talking about different bus routes?
No, we're looking, what the, what are, what we're being asked of is if we can put six through eight students on the memorial bus that's currently being.
K through.
So the pickup, the pickup locations are already on our routes.
Remain the same.
Already on the route, no change.
I am understanding from the people is that they would like to add the six through eight to the, to the stops that we already have designated.
Cause that's what the law.
Not designate new stops.
Okay, no new stops, but.
All right, we can't take public comment right now. Sorry. We're in the middle of.
The thing that the law, let me just mention one thing, the thing the law doesn't really, sorry. It doesn't say is it's the same routes, the same schedules, the same terms and conditions, but it doesn't say is whether or not you would have to add more buses. That's, there's a, there's a fundamental flaw here, which, which is that you don't get any funding from the state and that just is what it is, right? It's not, it's just how we structure funding in New Hampshire. When students leave, the funding that would have come here goes to the charter school directly. You get zero funding, but the kids are allowed to be on your buses because presumably you're operating. If there's so many ki- of your own kids and, and you don't have enough room for charter students, which I have no idea what the numbers are. I heard it's like the buses are half full, like I'm, I'm, I literally don't know, but if there was a situation where you had ninety kids and you said, Jim, what's our legal obligation? I would probably say, I don't see anywhere in here that says you don't have to add buses to accommodate them. It just says routes and schedules. So that, that, I'm throwing it out there that like that down the road might be something you want to look at if you do decide to expand it is how can you provide transportation? Are you gonna have to provide more buses in the distant future? I don't know.
That's a good call. I didn't think of that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I guess I was just trying to get clarification on whether we're talking about, there's seems to be two parts of the issue. Right? Like whether or not, I know it's the same, you know.
We're not talking about schedules and you're not talking about routes. You're talking, as far as I know, about the policy.
Okay.
That's the terms and conditions, um, where you limit who's on buses by age.
So. Um, so one of the comments that was, it was made a couple of times that they were promised that the, um, Seacoast Classical School, um, promised that we were gonna bust them. Did, did, so did the school district tell the Seacoast Classical Academy that we were busing the six through eights or?
I have to look into that because that would have that, that would have fallen under Matt Angel, who's currently in Alaska. So I have to ask that I caught that too, and I, I'd like to know more about that, but I need to investigate that allegation because it, it has been clear to me, I can only speak for what I know, and I, I did not say that. What, what I've, what I've known for a long time is that we were required to bust the K five students because the K five students would be going to school at the same time in the routes pre-existed. So I've known that for months, months and months, and, but I don't know what was communicated by the bus company who, or the Seacoast Classical Academy or, um, Mr. Angel. So I, I, I'd need to contact him when he gets back from Alaska.
Okay.
And I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know with that.
Yeah.
Heather and I negotiated the lease and I remember the K through five conversation.
We were very clear in our negotiations that we could bust the K through.
That's what I thought.
Not be able to bust the six through eight. Our current routes are set up. We, and we sat for negotiations in April, so.
So that should have been clear because they were at that negotiation.
Because that was our.
Of this.
Great. Okay. So that was a misrepresentation.
So I, I would invite any of the folks who are here, the parents who are saying that they were told that they would be busing for six through eight to email me. Who told them that?
I'll find the email because we were.
Yeah, I, I'm not asking for public comment right now. I'm asking you to eat, I, I'm happy to help. I just want you to email me so that I can do an investigation and then follow up with you and share the findings of that investigation because that's the correct process, right? I'm happy to help with it.
And I believe that the policy brought this for first read. Don't have to make a till the next meeting for our second read and make our determination. If we would like to do that.
I would like to know how many students from Newton are in the six through eight.
Yeah. I was gonna say, let's get some numbers behind this. Data con.
Where they live, how many?
How many are to stop?
Time.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Not a problem.
I think it was a fair point too, if the buses are literally half empty versus overflowing. There's a spectrum here between, you know, the safety of the kindergartners with a full bus and then jamming six through eight on a full bus versus putting two six through eight graders on a bus that's half empty. You know, in terms of managing the behavior on the bus.
I just want to be careful because if more students go there, it opens a can of worms.
Yep.
So we do need to think about what, it might be one thing now, but we have to be careful what that means down the road too.
And, yep, but I think it's fair of the district to say not adding bus, you know, additional buses, what, what did we say, thirty thousand dollars ish?
Or run, but roughly, yep.
A route. So we don't want the district in a situation where we have to start adding buses, uh, for the additional kids.
I, I can help a little bit with this right now and, and certainly whatever the will of the board is that the, the district will do. I, I want to make sure that people understand that the, the, I, I can tell you from riding the buses myself, which I, I did, I do it every year on the first day of school. So I've ridden seven years worth of bus routes. Uh, the buses aren't full. The question for you as a board is, do you want six, seventh and eighth grade students with K through five students? And before I allocate district resources, time, money, researching the numbers and getting the data and figuring all that out, I want the board to decide, is that, are you open to that? Because it's a waste of time and money for me to do all that research if you aren't open to that. If you are open to that, we need to have some bigger conversations.
I, I would say two things I want to say to that. If, if, is that okay? One, I do think that the re, that's an abstract question, and I know it could have wide reaching ramifications for the future if the, if Seacoast Classical grows significantly. But I, I agree with Ken's point that concretely two kids on a half filled bus is very different from
Okay.
ten kids on a packed bus, right? Just because we could, in theory, there are ways to talk about, you know, how those kids are situated on that bus in a way that separates them, you know, all the, all kinds of things, right? The, the, the reality is concrete and we should know what the concrete reality is and not just deal with abstract. We might be overblowing it. The other thing I wanted to mention was I heard from the comment, I, I'm not, I don't want to sound like I've decided on this issue yet because it's something that I'm thinking about right now. But I don't know that, that saying sixth graders on a high school bus is equivalent to six to eighth graders on an elementary bus. I think there might be a false equivalency there and that while you could make a statement that those things are kind of the same, that may be the case that they're not the same. And I, I would want to get more information about. I just think about my own like, you know, my own kids. And there is a, a maturity level at six in, in relation to a high schooler that is quite different from a relationship of an eighth grader to a kindergartner.
That's the, the number one, the number one impact of a bus ride is, is the length, right? Whether or not, you know, how long it is, will act how well they learn. Number two, if you do just some Google searches, the number two is the, is the conversation on that bus. So that, you know, I, my mind isn't made up either. Um, and you know, I'm torn because my kids don't ride the bus, so. Um, but if my kids did ride the bus and I had a kindergarten student on a bus with eighth graders, I know that conversation would be much different than my kindergarten conversation.
Sure.
So maybe there's a way to segregate the bus and, and maybe segregation isn't the best word, but, um, but you know, but then you're asking a bus driver who is charged with transporting these kids in a safe manner to now policing what's being said at seed arrangements and everything.
Right.
I think there's a lot of questions where we say yes or no.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it's necessarily just because, well, you let the sixth grader on, that doesn't necessarily mean it's a good idea to do this. Um, but I know a school district kids went to where this, it was six through twelve, the sixth graders sat in the front and the older kids sat in the back and that was, that was the rule, that was the policy to manage, to manage those, help manage those differences. As a small school district, they didn't have money to put additional buses on for, for age groups. It, you know, the middle and high school were co-joined, they all read this, rode, rode the same bus.
So Ken, I, I, I think that's a good idea, but I can tell you that's not in our contract with our school bus.
Yep.
So we can tell them that and they can tell us, yeah, we can find people that, first of all, they can't. Second thing you're gonna, you know, it's not on our contract. So we'd have to, we'd have to probably amend our contract with the bus, which I think could be an easy fix, you know, dorms. Right?
And again, I think it's a, it's a number, it's a numbers game too. Is it two kids or is it twenty kids, right?
It, it, yeah, that matters.
Also. Oh, we also have a, a policy and procedure on the bus for if they're not following the expectation right in the bus.
Correct.
This would extend to if we did allow the Seacoast Classical six through eighth graders as well.
And what's the element of, uh, school starting? Cause isn't there a difference between times of school starting or are they all the same?
At Seacoast.
And what's that difference?
About, about, well, the middle school and high school kids on our current bus runs start getting on the bus a little after six o'clock and are dropped off around six fifty to seven ten. The Seacoast Classical Academy middle school students start at the same time as our elementary schools, which is why these folks are asking for you to consider allowing the middle school students to ride on the elementary bus. Cause it, it is, I mean, they're, they're, they're correct about the bus run.
Okay.
Right? The, 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 the fundamental question before us as a, as a, as a group is, are you comfortable with six, seventh and eighth grade students riding with K five students? That's the first question. The second question is, are you, um, because the bus runs are forty five minutes. They're going to have to be maintained at forty five minutes per policy. So if we add students at existing stops that shouldn't adjust the bus run, what it, what it might do is the, the, the question would then be asked, if you allow this, does it add other stops? So it's not as simple as just getting some math together. The bus company has to run another route with the other students and run all the, the information through the system. Right? It's fine, we can do it, but and we've got a few weeks to do it because we meet again the first week of October. So I, I just want to make sure that you all know that, that the, the, the process of figuring that out isn't as simple as it's, it's, it's forty kids divided by five bus runs. And, and, you know, and it would be eight kids per bus. There's already thirteen kids on the bus. So now there's twenty one. It's not like that. It's who are the houses that would need a ride?
That's what.
And where would they be located and what would that do to the bus stops and would it create the need for an additional bus or another run? Right? So what, what I'm asking you, and I'll say it again, is if, if you are asking me to task my team with taking the time to do all that work and the analysis with the bus company, then I need to know, are you philosophically aligned with having K five students on the bus with six through eight students?
I philosophically am not, um, personally, and I said this in the policy subcommittee meeting, we had parents so mad at us for talking about putting six through twelve together. I don't know how we tell parents that we're now gonna put K through eight students together because I have kids that are my oldest and my youngest are eight years apart and I can tell you the stuff. It, it's, it's very different and I'm I'm not comfortable with saying K through eight because I know it just puts us into a whole can of worms that we could potentially get ourselves into a hole. Um, it, it, it just opens it up and I don't know how many students down the road it could be on each bus and how many eighth graders we could have with kindergartners. And I, I, I'm sorry, I, but personally from having sat and had people yell at us and email us when we were talking about doing, like when the changes were happening, I just don't know that I can get behind that. So.
That's a question. Um, my understanding is that each year they're gonna have a grade.
So we're only legally required actually to bus kids in, um, grades one through eight technically.
Okay, but I'm just raising the question though. Are we gonna get this, like, what's going to happen next year? We're gonna be back at this for next year and saying, well, you're already doing this, add one more grade, ninth grade, and then before you know it, is it K through twelve? I'm just just kind of asking that question that it, it doesn't really stop here. And we talk about the can of worms.
The can of worms.
Is that my understanding is that next year the ninth grade, so it I just, I don't see this fixing everything. I can see another issue next year.
And so Tom, I have to say, and I don't disagree with any of those points, um, I, I do I agree with one of your earlier points, which was I, I'm not ready to make the decision on that until I have all the information. And so part of that is, are we, so, and I wrote down really two things here, uh, siblings, right? So, uh, you know, if, if at the end of this investigation, let's just call it that, you come back and there's what, six, six, seven parents here and literally, uh, a hundred percent of these children are siblings of another child. Um, and I understand that we're on, that's only this year, right? Um, but that metric is very different and I think that goes into our calculus of how we think about this.
Okay.
So I, I, I am interested, uh, I think if, if we were saying five hundred people, Tom, and it's gonna take, you know, a team of people, six months to figure out, it's different. I don't feel like it's that number, uh, given where we're at.
It was probably thirty or forty.
So a curse, a cursory look that gives us a, an eighty percent accuracy on what we're looking at here, uh, to make an informed decision. And then, uh, to the parents, uh, the no notice part, um, I, I'm personally sorry. Uh, I don't know how that happened. Uh, I don't know how we're here to be honest. Uh, so that's really crappy to figure that out. They want a school, um, no parent wants that, you know what I mean? Um, and so, uh, of nobody's fault here that I know of, uh, we apologize. Um, so I'd like more information and that way we, I can make a, you know, better informed vote when it comes around.
And, and I would like to investigate.
Yeah, I would like to know who told them.
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on it.
I'm with, I'm with Jeremiah. I mean, I apologize to someone on the negotiating committee. I, we were very clear in the, during the negotiation. So I, you know, apologize that that information wasn't given to you. I do want more information because I know a lot of these families and I know there are many siblings and I know that they, you know, they're just, they're asking us to do our due diligence and take our time and look at this.
All right, I'll get to work on it and I'll bring it back to you in, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. But could you guys just fix the policy with the name and the.
Yes, so we do need to change the policy as recommended by the subcommittee. Um, so number four, uh, we need to change Samuel Regional Middle School that Newton.
And make a motion to move, uh, policy EEA wording from Newton to Kingston.
Second. All right, any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we moving the whole policy?
No, we're just changing language. Changing the language for Newton and Kingston.
Back on the agenda for the next meeting.
That right here?
But, but it is, they were corrected. There's a one word that.
Got it, got it. Okay.
All right, uh, any discussion?
Negotiation.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous, okay. All right, um, GCLA professional staff time schedules.
Thank you. Uh, um, the administration would like to ask the board to uh, rescind this policy because. Thank you, uh, um, the administration would like to ask the board to, uh, rescind this policy because it is redundant. The, this issue is managed by the collective bargaining agreement. And so it, there's no need to have the policy and the policy is not congruent with the new collective bargaining agreement that we negotiated last year. So it's in conflict directly with the CBA that the voters have ratified. So if you could, uh, just rescind the policy, that'd be great.
I make a motion to rescind policy GCLA.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you. All right, uh, DJE, uh, bidding requirements for purchase orders.
That is an update per our conversation last spring when Mr. Edelman brought up, uh, not waiving the policy regularly because of the number of bids that we could get and or the amount. And so we worked with, uh, he and I worked on a draft. And then that draft was approved by the financing facility subcommittee and then consequently recently this evening by, um, the, uh, uh, policy committee. So what we're asking is for a first and second read so that we can put the new policy into place because it helps us to move with procurement and, and helps us to be more smooth and transparent with that. Did I get it right, Rick?
Yeah, I think, and it covers longer term contracts, uh, testing the market, return on investment, stuff like that.
All the stuff that we talked about this spring that, that no one has a problem with, but just weaving a policy constantly isn't, isn't a good look for the district. So.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, first, first and second read.
I make a motion to approve date, policy DJE for first and second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. KCD, public gifts and donations.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Malilla put some notes in there. He apologizes that he couldn't be there here this evening. He's not feeling well. This is just a change in relation to the law, so we no longer have to have a public hearing for five thousand dollars. It's up to twenty thousand dollars. The good news is the hearing tonight was over twenty thousand, so we would have had that anyway, which is important to acknowledge things like the trustees, but it speeds us up for other smaller donations. That doesn't mean that they won't go on the school board agenda or that we'll have an acknowledgement to say thank you very much for these, these wonderful things that people do. It just means that we don't have to stop at six thirty and have a public hearing. We can still accept it. So I, I had asked that you, uh, adopt this for first and second read because it's a simple legal update.
Make a motion to approve for first and second read KCD, public gifts and donations as read.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, school board goals for twenty four, twenty five.
Thank you. I, I did draft some, I've been working with the administration on our goals, which I shared some of the things this evening. And really, I, I think that the suggestions are just a starting point for a conversation. I don't want anyone to feel like they couldn't add, change or do it. This is a board decision. The first is that we, we are in the midst of a huge final year of the NEASK process. This is a multi-year process. I met with Christine DeRochers today to discuss what's going to happen with this process this year. And it's a significant undertaking, including, um, I, I did mention to her that the NEASK committee wanted to meet with a couple of board members. So I thought the chair and vice chair would be the logical two people. If you feel otherwise, we can talk on about that. You know, so there's an ongoing process that, that I think because it's being run so smooth by Mr. Rocher. It's kind of in the background, but it's going to come to the forefront this fall, right around budget season. Our NEASK visit is the first week of December and that's a big, big, big deal. Right when the budget's due to go to the public for the vote by the board and Budcom. So it's going to be an interesting month of November. Second, I, I, if the board can continue to support the reading and math initiatives and what that looks like in my mind is that we have regular updates from Christine, Principal Mitchitson, Nicole, um, Heidi Zolman and Donna, who is our, uh, she's a wonderful math interventionist, Donna, helps us a lot at the K five level. I, I think that I'd like to see some workshops where we have conversations about the things that I shared this evening about instruction and what we're doing. So that the board is engaged in that process with feedback with the administrators, not just during the budget creation process. So one thing I've been thinking about is that it would be really helpful if we could have some time for you to meet with those people and talk with them and ask them questions and be engaged. Another one is, uh, having a conversation about the vision as we move forward with Fremont leaving the district. So I've talked with a number of people about, uh, the different ways that we could move forward and some of the ideas that have come forward are really increasing the early college dual enrollment opportunities at Sanborn. Those are really important because the early college dual enrollment opportunities are, uh, we have students who are almost or have completed an associate's degree before leaving high school. I was speaking with a student the other day, she's going to have her E, EMT and, uh, LNA certificates before the end of high school. These are really important, real jobs that they can get when they leave high school. When I was a kid, that wasn't even, uh, it wasn't even on the table to be able to do that. And now with, with technology and the way the world is, we can offer things to students that we'd never had before.
And the other thing about the early college dual enrollment, um, just so, cause I was not aware of this before. But it also helps to free up kids' schedules to allow them to be able to take more of the classes they want to take. Because, um, when you take a half year college credit, it counts for a full year of high school credit. So it helps to really, those kids that want to do it all. It, it frees our schedule up more, so.
Also saves them financially if they get their gen.
Huge, yes.
And this, this next one.
It's really great.
Thank you, thank you. And that is very true. It's very helpful, but in it also encourages first year, first time college students to, uh, first generation, like myself, a first generation student to go to college in their family to have a college experience before they go to college, which can truly build their confidence, I could do this.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Right? Way more than any test score.
Yeah, I, I have my daughter in this because I want her to be prepared for when she hits college. She already knows what the expectation.
It's great, it's great. I really hope that people take advantage of that as their kids come up because we've worked hard on it. The other thing is that we want to explore, now this may not be a, a, a possibility, but we want to explore it. The possibility of developing the Sanborn Regional High School into a vocational center of its own. As our population gets smaller and smaller, we have a four-year agreement with the Seacoast, uh, uh, School of Technology, but at some point we might want to look at being a, a regional vocational center here. We have the facility. I don't know about the, the process of being accredited and doing it all, but I'd like to look into it. And so I would hope that the board might support us at least investigating it. Some of the programs that, that have been thrown around just in conversation that would assist us with that would be having an early childhood program, which would allow students to practice or be involved in early childhood education while staff could have childcare at the school, which we think would actually help with staff retention. So we talk about staff retention in terms of like the fiscal component of paying people salaries, but if you have childcare, the pay grade is, it costs so much.
Twenty thousand dollar bonus.
Exactly. Yeah, if we could find a way to provide childcare and provide a, a, an environment for our children to experience early childhood education, it could be a real win-win for both. I would also like to see if we explored developing the high school as a vocational center, um, an electric, electrical program for, um, future electricians, cosmetology, HVAC, continue and expand welding, the wood, the woodworking in the shop that we have. And then other programs based on the, the community and the students. I, I just think that this idea of, of multiple certifications and dual enrollment is the future of education in the modern era. And we're poised to do something really creative with it because we have the facility. And we'd be able to potentially attract students from other communities if we did this. So that, that's kind of the, the, this is very in its infancy. It's very new, but it's the, I, I, I'm asking for you to set a goal of visioning and having a conversation at this point, right? It's just a start. So, so those were just some ideas, but I can't even imagine what we'd get together if we had community forums and had parents come and students and really engage everyone in figuring out what the vision is for the future. Go ahead, Heather.
How are we gonna make the, you know me, I'm a therapist, so these sound like really great, like visions, but I don't see, how are they gonna be, what are the objectives, interventions, like how are we, how are we gonna make these magical balls?
You want to make them smart?
Smart balls, thank you.
Right, thank you.
How can, like, how are we gonna do this to make sure that we can show this to, you know, our taxpayers?
Right, right. I think that's great. So, so are you asking about the, why don't I finish and then we'll go, we'll talk about that? Is that, is that okay? All right. Um, so then refining the capital improvement plan, we have talked about this capital improvement plan for years. We have to fund this now. This building is going to be twenty years old in, in just eighteen months. It has infrastructure issues that are going to start coming up, the, the memorial school. Like Jeremiah said at the last facilities meeting, which I thought was right on, it's not a scare tactic, it's just a fact, right? The, the buildings are X age. And when buildings are X age, if you don't plan carefully for the future, you get caught and you have a crisis. There, there's no reason why we shouldn't have proactive planning financially, in addition to just being aware of what the issues are. And I really liked the point that was made at the last facilities committee meeting. The portables at Memorial may be quote end of age, but that doesn't mean they're not okay. Our plan should be to inspect them and see where they're at and see if they're deteriorating. Our plan should be to look at our windows, our boilers, our controls. There's really three levels. One is what could be a crisis, like roofs and windows and siding and things like that, or boilers. And then there's the control systems at Bakey that are very old and could be just saving us money on an ROI if we do it right up now and we're upfront. And we are talking about projects and ideas for these types of things, but I really want to mention that I just think that it would be smart for the community to hear the board weighing in on those items over the course of this year because what I'm really thinking about for, for the future of the district is the three lenses that I, I, my job requires me to look at this place in multiple lenses every day. One is the student experience, right? What, what are the kids experiencing? What do they need to be successful in the world that they're going to face? A world where there are no remedial jobs because they're all done by robots. The world they'll face is so different than the one that we, we will, we can't predict it. It's ten years away, it'll be completely different. So reading and math seems like logical places, the ability to learn independently and quickly. It feels very important to me in the world that they're going to face. The second lens that I look at every day is how do the operations work? What is the functioning of the district in terms of the physical elements of the district? All the way from mowing the grass, painting walls, bathrooms, water, all of it, right? And then the third one is our staff. How, how can our, we maintain our staff and, and, and retain the great teachers that we have? And build their skills to help those kids meet those goals. They need the facilities. It's all like, it's a symbiotic washing machine. So I was trying to capture the three things that I think about most regularly in the goals. And, oh, and, and to Heather's point, the measurable part should come from us working together to figure out what it's going to look like. So that's part of the goal is to figure out so that, that for facilities, which I'm looking at Rick and Jeremiah and Micah because they're on that committee. They would be tasked with not only identifying the problems that are in the, in the buildings or the future problems, verifying that they're actually a problem, not just an assumption. And then making an actual concrete plan for the outcome for those, when, when are we going to pay for it and how? Right? It can't just be, oh, it's on the list. It has to be in this year, we're going to pay for this. Exactly.
And I, and I think it does relate back to our strategic plan. So I mean, I like that the goals do relate to our strategic plan. I just want to make sure that like, I think a lot of times people make goals, but they don't have action steps for them and ways that we can show the, the taxpayers that we're working towards these goals in a measurable way.
Yep, which is exactly why I shared the data this evening and talked about the plans to, to, I agree with you completely. We need to talk about what we're doing about the issues we face. So I think that the, the, the NEASK process is kind of in process. That would be more, you all are aware of it. Christine keeps you aware of it. You support Christine in doing the work and, and me. You know, it's, it's a little bit less, less interactive on your end. Jen is highly involved in that process. And she would be one of the people that would come to you and share information. The reading and math initiatives, we need to have some workshops here at the board level where the people that are on the ground with that work come here and talk to you. It can't be all me telling you what's going on. We need, we need, um, Christine and, and some of the interventionists and maybe even some of the teachers if they're willing to come to sit down and talk about the work. In terms of the, the visioning, I think that's a whole board conversation where we engage the community and staff and ask them for feedback and input in the visioning process. And come up with a vision of where we want to end up in X number of years. So the goal for that, Heather, is to create a plan that would be, become a part of the strategic plan. I think that the reason why I'm bringing that up is because when Fremont leaves, I feel like we need a plan for what we're going to do. And so it's time to play proactively, not reactively. Fremont's leaving in, in, in a couple of years, they start to leave, but really it's going to be four years from now that we really feel it. Right? So we have time to do something and I'm, I'm really hot on getting motivated and active. I, I, the other problem is, is that I love the Seacoast School of Technology and I want our kids to stay there, but if we get too small, it is really hard to bust them over there at the half day. If we have a program here in-house, it makes it way more efficient for our kids to just go to the class down the, down the hall. Instead of going all the way over to Exeter, Exeter and back every day. It takes almost an hour of their day.
I will say, but for some kids getting out of the building.
I agree.
Like, just it, that break, but, you know, so I'm not saying I'm against this idea, but I think for some kids, being able to go to other places and.
Yep. And, and I'm not saying that we wouldn't do that. It, it's, it's a question of, could we look into it and just explore? What, what is the data? What would it look like?
Fill the gaps that aren't.
I love the idea of filling the gaps of the. I love the childcare idea. I think that is huge. I think it's a huge win for the, it'd be a huge win for the students, but a huge win. Twenty thousand dollar raise right there.
And I came from a district that was a vocational center, a regional vocational center. And that draws people from not just surrounding districts, there were actually people that moved from out of state to the town because their kids could go to the, um, the vocational center.
Having been a principal in that town.
They see the value of that. It draws people from very high economic status to an area of very low economic status because they saw the value for their kids uh, as graduates of the vocational center, so.
And also just hope we wouldn't turn it into other vocational schools up now where it's, kids have to have like straight A's and they have to do all these curriculars, which takes away the whole idea of one of the vocational schools, isn't it?
And that's part of the visioning process, right? So you just started it already. You're, you're right on. Talking about what we believe and what we want and what we think and feel and trying to figure out the, the way forward for the kids. And it could be that we get through the process and we decide, there, there, I can see six different roads ahead of us. And, but it really is about the community coming together and, and sharing its values and having the school meet the needs of the community and collaboration with the community. So I would hope that if we do this, that the parents would come and, and be engaged and we should talk to students. Right? So if you'd like to adopt any of the goals or none of the goals, that's fine. I just wanted to share with you what my thoughts.
Like adopt all those goals, I like them.
Then make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt all goals that the superintendent has put before us.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Are we saying that we're adopting them as a starting point or as a final vision?
Cause it sounded to me like there's gonna be.
Adopting a discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, th- these are heady goals. They could be two years.
Sure.
We, this is a lot to do, right? Visioning this.
Sure.
Is, is, it could be that we get to the end of this year and we get this far with NEASK and everything.
Yeah.
But we want to keep going and we work on it over the summer with focus groups. It's okay.
I see some missing on there is what I'm saying. So I, I'm not, I don't want to, I don't want to close the door.
Timeframes?
No, as far as broad vision.
Yeah.
Well, would you like to see?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeremiah, say it.
Academics and test scores.
That's our number two.
Yeah, so I think, I think, I think what we need to do is.
I don't want to speak for Jeremiah, but I think, you know, in my mind, this is missing a, a lot of the smart, right? It's, we all said it.
Well, that's what it is.
If this is gonna be adopted as a draft and a working document that we're gonna make changes to a little way, and I think I'm okay with it.
I, I would say, yeah.
Yes.
I would agree with that completely. It should be, it should evolve dramatically.
Directional.
Okay, cause number two, support.
Right, yeah, we gotta say what that means. In different avenues.
What would that look like, Ken? Right? That's what you're saying is drill down. Like, what would the support look like? What, what is that?
We want to see improvements.
Right.
I just supported, supported to see improvements, you know, over time.
So what would be the regular cadence that we're.
I think we should talk about it at every meeting.
I agree.
As a standing agenda item and we should bring people in to talk about it with us. So for example, if you adopt number three, the first thing I'll do is ask Jen to start looking into the rules around vocational centers. So for example, if you adopt number three, the first thing I'll do is ask Jen to start looking into the rules around vocational centers. What are the rules? Because you have to find out the laws and rules before you can move forward with having a vision. If if the law is you can't have one within X number of miles and it just shuts it right down, then we know what we're playing with. Then then we know that one door closes and we're in the lane of what Heather said of like doing some programs that bridge. We got to know what our options are. I don't even know yet. This is in in its infancy. What are the, what are the uh uh for Jim, like, not now, but we'll talk later about what what are the pitfalls or concerns about having childcare on a, in a school facility? Right? What are the 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 liability? What's the, what would the insurance costs be? What's the, I have so many questions. So the first thing we'd start doing is listen out the questions. Right? And then start organizing them by topics and and getting answers.
So would we like to make a motion to approve these as an organic document?
Living document.
So do we want it, so we can modify the motion?
Don't you want me to amend my motion?
Yeah.
I amend my motion to adopt these uh goals as a living document.
Second.
I struggle on that?
No, I did.
I just laugh.
With with monthly, with monthly meeting updates. Um, okay, any further discussion?
Jen, do you have any discussion?
You just gotta, wanna work on your plate. And I'm here, doesn't that happen if you're not here?
Just wait, just wait till you're not here.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Great, guys, I'll get to work.
All right, uh, we need to approve check signers.
I make a motion to approve the check signer so listed by Mr. Malila in the handout.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Everyone's had time to review, I'm assuming. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
All right.
Rooftop unit replacement for Seacoast Classical.
Yes, uh, I think the facilities committee, I'm sitting in for Matt because he's not feeling well this evening. But the, there's an issue with the rooftop uh uh units at the Seacoast Classical Academy. And um the facilities.
There was.
There was.
There was, yeah. Go ahead, Rick. Can you guys talk?
No, no, you go ahead, sorry.
Okay, no, no, it's okay. I'm kind of just punting here that that basically the cost to replace them or fix them was twenty eight thousand dollars. The Seacoast Learning Collab, the Seacoast Classical Academy paid for half. So it's a fourteen thousand dollar cost to the district and Mr. Malila's just asking for the board to approve that. Uh, so that it, I think it's been completed, right? Because it had to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, the facilities committee's been working on this, but it's important that the public knows what's going on and that it comes out of the facilities use revolving fund, which is their rent.
And the units were, right? Jeremiah, there were end of life. They they had pre prior repairs.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and some of the repairs were repetitive, so it was, made the best sense to replace.
Yeah, and thanks to the facilities committee and Dan Doyle. Dan Doyle worked hard on figuring everything out and making sure that it was a worthwhile cost to replace them now instead of repairing them again.
Right.
With any good money after bad.
And completed right before the students returned, so there were no safety concerns, you know, issues in the school, so.
Yes, he's done a great job. Appreciate him.
Yeah, great work, Dan.
But he left, he didn't even, he watched the video. He was here, yeah.
So we need to make a what?
Just approve.
I have a, a quick question.
Yeah.
Do we have any other foreseeable things that we need to have fixed? Like, I feel like since the S C A, we've done quite a few things. Like, are there any other foreseeable things?
Nothing that I'm aware of, but Mr. Malila's not here. Do you know of anything, Rick, Jeremiah?
No, and this wasn't really, really foreseeable, right? Because they haven't fired up for.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe now that we have the whole building being occupied, we should add, go over and change our um or update our list to include a lot of stuff at that.
When you say the list, talk about the capital.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the the
It'll be part of it.
I mean, in all transparency, those boilers that are
Right.
Two boilers and
Yeah, no, they
They're they're, you know, quote unquote, end of life.
Yep.
But at some point, even repairs throwing, you know, good money on a bad unit, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right.
I I think we should have a plan to place one, one year, replace one the next year. Um, so there's stuff like that. You know, the capital improvement plan, I think, when I got on the board, it wasn't, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
Uh, so um there is one now. It has to be revised. You know, I think, I think at one point it turned a little bit into a wish list, a wish list.
Very much, yeah.
And and I think we've done a good job of whittling it down. But to your point, in some regards, you know, a good capital improvement plan is sort of a wish list if it's if it's wished out long enough, right? And you you put a plan in place and you know, like, something is gonna be end of life. Doesn't mean you necessarily have to replace it just because it's called end of life, but you have the funds to replace it if you had a catastrophic event.
Right.
Or or repair it if it if it makes sense, right? So I think there's a good balance in a good capital improvement plan.
Yep, and 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 as I've said, it it it's time, right? And the budget will probably reflect that. I think that this year it's highly likely that the closed budget will be more than the default because of the capital needs that need to go in the budget.
And then the voters. There aren't any now.
Right, exactly.
There haven't been for years.
Exactly, and same thing with the technology piece that we've been talking about for the last three years. There's just a point where we need to tell the voters, like, this is what we need to run the school district effectively, and we'll talk about that more in in the upcoming meetings.
Uh, do I have a motion on this?
I I think that Matt just needed you guys to approve it, right, Rick? Like the the, I mean, it's been
It's done.
It's done.
Yeah, it's done.
Oh, no, it was the taking the money from the facilities use revolving fund. The board needs to approve that.
So we need a motion to
To withdraw the the amount, I think it was fourteen thousand. I I I'm not reading the
Uh, fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty two.
Yep, if someone could make a motion to to approve taking that out of the facilities use.
Make a motion to approve taking the fourteen thousand, two hundred and
Twenty two.
Twenty two dollars out of the facilities use revolving fund to pay for the um rooftop here.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, we have no old business, uh, we have no public left.
Which is, I had hoped they would stay for the second public comment and then.
Yeah, well, I think the problem.
I don't say no.
That was the problem.
This is the thing, we gotta
Yeah, we, like, I think we
Okay.
You, I mean, we effectively have to make sure that when we have people here that we say, like, look, we have these other, can we ever take it out of order?
You could.
We could.
Why don't we, why don't we do that?
Somebody, if somebody
They can get home to their kids and stuff.
Yeah, somebody just has to make a a recommendation.
Yeah, my bad, yeah.
I was all agree to, but I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. Anytime we want to move, because there are times where I will do that because I know, like, you know, if say Jen has to get home for something and she's got something that's later on the agenda, we'll try to move it up. Or if we have like
Stuff I didn't think we could public.
I didn't.
Yeah, I thought the public comment.
You just have to have two.
Two people.
Public comments.
Two public comments and and truly, I, when you looked at me, if you could speak, I got a little nervous because I were not supposed to go back and forth in public comment and I wasn't trying to, I I didn't know what you were going for. Right? I didn't know if you wanted to engage with them. And then Micah said something and he he said what I think you wanted. What it came out to be was totally okay. What I was worried about and what I want to be transparent about is we're not supposed to have a banter with the public. We're supposed to listen to their input and deliberate and follow the process. And you know me, I'm very process oriented.
But but I, what I don't want is people walking on egg.
Yeah, I
Because I I, you know.
Yep.
You could hear footsteps.
Oh, they were not happy because they wanted you to decide this evening on that matter.
Well, maybe they wanted to be heard again, but they couldn't wait.
Great point.
Can't make assumptions.
Yep, thank you.
Also, would love to discuss the com- the process of not I want to know, I want to know what drives the don't talk back and forth with the public.
Sure, okay.
We don't have to talk about that now.
Yeah.
But I want to understand that better.
Thank you, we'll discuss.
All right, um, so next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be a joint board meeting with the Fremont School Board on Wednesday, October second, twenty twenty four. Six P M in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Um, the Sanborn Regional Budget Committee will meet, will convene on Thursday, September fifth, twenty twenty four in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School and would someone like to call us into non?
Make a motion to move us into non-public session, RSA ninety one dash A seven one three, Roman numeral two.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call in, Rick?
Yes.
Jeremiah?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Micah?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, quick uh five minute break.